Twenty twenty-one, it's at seven P. M. This is the Spring Hope Board of Commissioners meeting. First item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance. I would ask everyone, please stand, take the flag, remove your hat, and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda is the minutes from the board meeting on April the fifth. entertain a motion for any changes or a motion to accept them as written.
Make the motion that the one heading correction is to set the minutes as written?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as written. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Motion passes. The next item on my agenda is a public hearing on the zoning text amendment to regulate electronic gaming. I will need a motion to go into public hearing.
Make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second for public hearing. On the zoning text, on the zoning to regulate electronic gaming. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Commissioner, I'm going to let you open this up to the public. This is probably what we're doing.
Again, this is a application twenty twenty-one ZTA O two, an update to the already existing ordinances on electronic gaming. Again, this update regulates some of the safety protocols that were at some point in the past discussed with a prior business, but again, our concern safety, our concern was that we wanted to codify some of those safety protocols which are available if you look on your attachments. All that in red line is the safety protocol. We also did amend some of the fees for the machines as well, too. If you have any questions for the public, has any questions?
Come back from the public here to speak on this issue. Do you have any questions?
And again, a lot of these safety protocols were discussed with the police chief and I, similar to, again, what was conducted by a prior business, but again, with any potential new business that comes into that former establishment, right now, they wouldn't have to comply with that if they were to set up and send in a zoning application request as a matter, so.
Anybody from the public has any questions or anything to say? Then I would tip a recommendation to go back into open session. I'll need a motion for that.
Take a motion to get back in open session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go back into open session. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. That motion passes.
Does anyone on the board have any questions about this? I guess my question is, and I think I know the answer, but these are the security recommendations. The chief may correct.
Some of them, yes, sir.
Yes, my question is, are the recommendations, is it really our position to customize how they have to run their business, that they have to hire a security guard? I mean, you know, you're pretty much thinking of recommendations still essentially law, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I can understand that the need to show an I D, state, federal or state I D, to prove age. And I understand you letting a law enforcement go through to make sure that nothing illegal is going on. Really, the cameras outside of the parking lot, the cameras on the inside, and I know they're just, they're safety recommendations.
Again, the concern was that this was, this is the type of business that we are regulating in town, and things have happened in the past, so we figure if another one which has a right to come in and apply for an application and reestablish a business at that location, we want to make sure that, again, the safety of our community and folks who want to frequent that establishment don't come into harms way, and this is what we felt like was probably necessary for that type of business, yes.
Well, I prefer my question to the town's attorney. Is there a point where we could be overstepping our bounds?
I mean, I think that there's nobody, nobody has a vested right to have an establishment. If they want to have an establishment, they have to follow the town's ordinances, and the town's free to impose whatever ordinances it wants. I mean, I guess there may theoretically be some line, but I don't think you're close to that, as far as that goes.
There's no more discussion. I will entertain a recommendation or suggested motion of the second page of this.
I got, I do have a question for the chief. How much education do your officers have if they were to do a walkthrough? Was that pretty much still up to the elderly?
I couldn't understand what you're talking about.
I said, how much education were you, were your officers have if they're to walk through to recognize what's set up illegally and what's legit?
We're not going to know.
That's what I thought.
But as far as putting that in there to be able to conduct a walkthrough, then I can take anybody with me that I want, which would be illegal.
But technically, still their jurisdiction?
It is their jurisdiction. It is their, it would be their, their cases, their charges, well, not necessarily their charges, it would be our charges under their umbrella, under their guideline.
And this third-party security, assuming that it longer includes our officers or?
No, I would no longer put a police officer in any establishment in life.
Do I have a motion or a recommendation?
I'll make a motion that twenty twenty-one ZTA dash O two is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plans that is in the Southside Towns Plan.
Second. Do I have a second? Let me, Commissioner. I have a motion and a second that twenty twenty-one ZTA O two is not inconsistent. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Do I have a recommendation or motion on item two?
I'll make a motion that twenty twenty-one ZTA dash O two is reasonable in the public interest.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second that it is reasonable in the public interest. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Motion passes.
And I make a motion that we approve the amendment twenty-six dash two forty.
I have a motion to approve the following amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. Opposed say no. The ordinance passes the announcement. Next item I have is a consideration request from GFL regarding the CPI index.
Yes, so as per our contract with the GFL, the, any and all requests for increases have to be approved by the town board. The CPI index for this year for garbage and trash collection is listed at four point six percent, and they are requesting the town for a three percent increase similar to last year.
Just out of curiosity, Dave, what part would that make us reference?
That, no, there would not be a doubt. Yes. I believe the cost made per, per month on our fees, I think it was around four hundred, maybe four or five hundred dollars additional per month.
What's the rationale for that increase, though?
It says that rising cost of business, I think, fuel costs and additional, there weren't any specific details, but again, similar to other types of contracts where they have these kind of things built in for indexes for their service sector, whatever industries, it's a common thing, and again, for our contract, our original contract was something that we had with.
Veterans.
Veterans waste, which was taken over when, when the company was absorbed by GFL. So, again, we have an interesting way of doing this that's written into that original contract, unlike any other typical municipalities around here that have contracts with GFL.
We will need a motion and a second.
If, if, if the board does approve, and just a side note, for the draft of the budget for this year, the additional percentages was, was calculated into the draft budget.
But Dave, what happens if we don't approve? They, they just still move on, or they'll come back later? What, what actually happened?
They, again, it's the board's discretion to increase, I'll ask for the increase or not, but our contract with them will be coming up soon, so we're going to have to start negotiating or talks with them in the next, starting probably next month or so.
Well, I never even know if any footway there picking up trash. Sometimes it's Saturday evening late. It's been on a Sunday.
I think most recently, there was a truck that, that was disabled, and they did have to finish up on the following day on Saturday. Though I believe that was the most recent.
When day was on a Sunday?
They even got to the point where they're, I know when they're doing my trash, they're dropping it on the street. They picking it up. They just leave it there.
If the trash came in, moved the street? I don't think it did an increase for doing a bad job, if my question.
I agree with Commissioner Lucas, but what's the pushback? I mean, it is contractually there entitled. I remember it's having discussed previously. It has got, in the past few weeks, it has taken the client.
We are more than welcome. You said the contract is coming up?
Twenty twenty-two.
You're more than welcome to not approve any increase at this time, let them come, ask them come before you and explain their request and explain their deficiencies in our service. I think that is very reasonable.
So I can't ask for that, for them to come, I, I don't know if the company is allowing for onsite visits, but if the case is that it needs to be a Zoom call, we can set that up for, for next month if you're all right.
I think that'd be a good idea to have them come.
I would recommend they, they attend.
They ask if that's four to five hundred dollars a month cost to the town, and they should come in front of us in the town and explain it.
I'll, I'll contact them and find out what, what, what their corporate policies are at this point with, with site visits.
Do you need a motion to table this, or just move on?
No, just move on, yeah. I'll bring it next month.
Move on.
My other concern is we keep going up, and you said this is, this would be a four to five hundred dollar a month increase?
I can't remember the exact amount, but I believe it was somewhere in that range.
That's four to five thousand dollars plus a year, and at some point, we can keep absorbing that.
Because we absorbed it last time.
Right, but I mean, we can keep absorbing without going up on cost.
Exactly.
Because eventually, we're going to end up in the hole. All right, the next item on my agenda is the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-one to O three, the Springhead Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Yes, again, this, our original land use plan was approved back in nineteen ninety-nine, and we've been using that plan for the last twenty years. We did contract with the local COG, the Upper Coastal Plains Council of Governments, to assist us through the process of updating this, and again, we haven't met on hand physically in, in a town hall recently, but prior to COVID, we did work with their planners for well over a year, maybe year and a half, I believe, to, to get this written up, and what you have is a, a draft final copy of this plan, again, for our policies and, and development of the future here in, in Springhope with our land uses. Typically, many businesses, developers, you know, when they look at certain areas to potentially look at development purposes, they're going to want to see and know what plan we've got written out for the, for the near future, and so what's being proposed is, is a plan for the next ten years, and again, if there are any minor corrections or, or grammatical mistakes that, that are found at any point, those can be corrected. When the, this board considers adoption, you would be adopting this per any amending points to the plan.
I hear a motion or recommendation from the board?
Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash O three, adoption of Springhead Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-one O three that Springhead Comprehensive Land Use Plan. There's no more discussion. All in favor say ah. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget in the draft.
Again, you have, I grant you a draft copy of the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. The total amount for the general fund expenditures is one million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. The amount for the water and sewer fund, which is the enterprise fund, is budgeted for four hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars for a combined budget of one million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. You do have attached with you a complete line item of both revenues and expenditures, expenditures which are balanced. We do have an increase, again, in the amount for the general fund, and the percentage of this increase is, is basically from past budget ordinance for a project that we had. It is the C-MAG Pedestrian Connection Project, so our match portion of that represents, represents a large percentage of that increase. We do have increases in our property values, again, with a conservative collection rate that we've estimated at ninety-six percent for the year, and again, the enterprise fund has slightly increased from last year's four hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred to the current request of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred. With this current year's budget, we are not asking for any raises or changes to our property tax, again, which will remain at sixty-seven cents per hundred dollar valuation, and again, with the, the, the general fund, the largest percentage of the, of the fund typically is dedicated towards personnel, including salaries and all benefits, which represents forty percent of the budget for, for the next fiscal year. What's also being requested is a cost of living adjustment, a COLA, set at one percent, one percent similar to what was requested prior year last year. And, let's see. Again, with some of the changes that you'll see when you review the, the line items for our budget, there is an increase in contracted services. We will have to make some updates with our zoning ordinance that's regulated or mandated by the General Assembly. The local COG actually has went ahead and sent out an RFP request for services, and they had selected two firms to work with any municipalities within, within the region of the COG to contract, and so I've yet to, to contact them, but I'll, I'll do so shortly to reach and, and get some quotes on what it would cost for us to update those ordinances. So I have calculated and put that estimate into the budget. There's a slight increase in the downtown development board budget as well for potential future projects for the next fiscal year, set at twenty-three thousand, and again, some of these were based on discussions and priorities that the board had wanted to address, and again, these are some of the updates that I have been giving the board throughout the year with initiatives of what the downtown development board is working on. And again, some of the other slight increases in the personnel cost compared to last year represents the remainder of the portion of the significant increases that we have for the additional budget for this year. Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
You have a fourteen thousand dollar increase for the downtown development board?
Yes.
From nine thousand, that you used none of last year?
You mean our current year?
The current year.
Yes, we used a portion of it, or will be using a portion of it, and that was from what we had budgeted for the part-time code enforcement, but again, the reason that a lot of the funds from that board hasn't been spent in the past is that we had actually gotten the board created, because it only been created less than two years, but a good portion of last year, we hadn't met with our meetings due to COVID, but again, with the projects that we're considering, we're considering a mural project, a facade, facade grant project, but again, if any of those expected funds aren't used, just like any other department funds, and we come short in, in having to do potentially other repairs in town, those funds can be absorbed over to, to other departments as needed, which we have done in the past.
This is just a presentation, anyway.
Yes, and again, I, I know that you're mentioning that specific line item, but there's a few other contracted services line items that have gone up significantly as well, too, for, for the next year's budget.
I named it because you said it.
I know, yes.
Do you mind if there are any questions about the budget presentation?
Again, we do have two more months left in the fiscal year, so typically, as, as we do when we have the public hearings for the budget in June, typically, we recess that meeting so that we can finalize the, the end of the year stuff with our finance officer, and we usually select a date at next month's meeting to give the final approval at that date, so just as a reminder on how we protocol have done the, the budget process. Again, this is a draft. If you all have any questions or need to speak with me following the meeting between now and next month, you can do so as well.
Can I read a little? This is just point of discussion. Next item on the agenda is the garden club and introduction and report of activities.
Tonight, we have Jennifer Wilkins. She is the co-chair of the garden club, and she's here to give it up there.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jennifer Wilkins. I am the co-chair. About six weeks ago, Peggy Leggett and myself, she's the other chair, we were in the downtown development meeting, and they challenged us because we were talking about maybe getting some flowers planted, and they said, there's just no money in the budget, there's no one to do it. They said, but if you can come out and get a garden club to do it, knock yourself out. That was six weeks ago. Six weeks ago, we decided, she and I, when we left that meeting to do this. The first meeting we had was possibly three weeks ago. We had seven people walk in to show side. Those seven ladies started talking. We started really working with it. The newspaper did a beautiful article on how we wanted to do things. We want to make this town beautiful. We figure if we help the downtown development committee and the town helps them, we can turn this town around and make it something absolutely gorgeous. So we decided the thing we need to do is we need to look at what kind of things we can do. So, across the street here, there was at one point a garden club, modern stand, like twenty years ago, and the bedding, we, we had a meeting this past week, instead of seven people, we had fifteen. We are charging a five dollar per person per month due. We are looking for people to help us. I know my, my boss, who works for, well, he owns Ser Pro in North Raleigh, he's going to be one of those people to help us. We want to have an event July third, because we don't have a July fourth event here. So what we decided to do is have a children's parade right around here. We want to bring in the children, the families. There's forty-five new homes going to be built here. That's going to be young people. They're going to be having children. We want those children to love this town, and we want thirty years' amount of those children that are in school to buy the businesses in here that is already being established, because right now, we're working to get the downtown development some help. We want to help them. to get the downtown development some help. We want to help them. So we figured, alright, we'll just do some fundraising. We will try to bring our community together. COVID was really bad last year. So we decided, well, how else can we do that? Let's bring the children and we'll do this. We're already working on flyers. Those flyers are going to the school at the end of the year to let the parents know that we're going to do this. We're already working on projects for the children to do. We're not going to charge the children, but they're going to play in worms. And they're going to help plant those worms in our feeders, which will help nourish our planters that we're going to be working on. We want to do, on the 4th, with your permission, we would like to have church service. So we're working to get all of the churches together to have one massive church service because, again, this past year has been horrible. And we think that if we can make things prettier the way we talk to each other, the things we do. We really wanted to support spouting this weekend. So my family, we all went up there and bought four plates. And let me tell you, if you didn't buy a plate, you missed out because the food was excellent. We want them to grow because if spouting can grow, if the town council can grow, if the community can grow, and it is. There's no homes. People are buying homes as fast as they go on the market. And so with that, with the new budgeting, with all the projects you guys have going on, we're asking that you guys might look to help us help you. We know that the planters belong to the town. So we want to go in there and we want to pull everything up. We're going to plant pretty flowers in there. Because the more flowers, it's like your, your house. For sometimes I sweep my floor first. Because if my floor is dirty and I'm looking down all the time, then my floor is, my house is filthy. But if I sweep that floor first, it's a little bit easier to go up. It's just like your yard. If you go home every day and your grass has not been cut, then your yard looks awful. But if you got there and cut it, if you don't do nothing but cut it, you've at least made it look better. And so that's what we want to do. We want to fix this out here so when you walk through or drive through, people are interested. I wanted to buy a house in Lewisburg. The house didn't come up, but this house in Spring Hope did, seven years ago. We fell in love with it. Mrs. Francis's house is the house that I live in. She has flowers everywhere. I can't get rid of those flowers, no matter how much I try to pull them up. But that lady's trying to tell me to help because she was so involved in this community. And so Peggy Leggett and myself, we've got these things going on. On July 3rd, we want to have a small project. We want to have vendors. If anyone can help us get vendors, we want to have ideas. I'd love to talk with some nurseries and see if they would come in. And maybe sell flowers and plants because it is all about the garden club helping us come up with funds. We want to come up with funds, but we also want to give back. And we all need prayer. This community needs prayer. This country needs prayer. If we can all have church together, I think nothing would be nicer to show that this community is coming together. So there's just a lot of things we want to do. We've already got a Facebook page. We'd like everyone to try to check it out. You get invited to it. If you have any ideas, we want to do a yard of the month. That way we can just drive around and stop in a lady's house and make her feel good and say, hey, your yard is fantastic. And we want to put a sign up there and let everyone know about it. We want to work with you during the pumpkin festival. We really want you to support us, if you can, and support the downtown development project. Because we want to see life here where there hasn't been a lot of life lately. Thank you very much for talking to us and letting us tell you what we're thinking.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Chamber of Commerce updates.
Good evening. Glad to see you, everybody. Jennifer, thank you for the, the warmup with this great segue. Tonight, I am going to ask a couple of things of the board. I gave you all a handout saying dining at the depot. The garden club has done a terrific job in, in spreading things up downtown, and it's high time that we bring some people downtown to see it. So what I'm going to ask of the board tonight is to allow the chamber to invite food trucks from around the state. I've got several that are already interested in your response tonight. And allow them to come in downtown a few times a, a week. Earmarking between four to six nights a week. And allow them to vend in the downtown depot plaza block. This will be off the street. On the third page of your handout, you see there's three locations within the confines of that. We would hope to, to fill block one four to six times a week. This proposal actually comes from a friend of mine over in Bailey. Bailey Chamber of Commerce and the town over there has, for the last year, helped many of these food vendors that have been without festivals and activities to go to. So they've had them posted on private property there in town. As a Bailey area resident, I personally treat it like the sixth restaurant in town. The menu changes every night. The good news from that is, from a Chamber of Commerce standpoint, the Bailey scenario allowed one of these vendors, that was local to Bailey, the taco truck, it's pretty good, if you ever had it. They grew such a following from doing this and vending in, in the town that they are now opening a brick and mortar restaurant in Bailey this month. So that was a, a good leap for them to allow them to become a, a full-fledged restaurant. I would hope that something along that line would also happen here, that a local vendor could gain a following and establish a restaurant here in Spring Hope. So we do have the support of local restaurants in town. They think it's great. They would actually be an add to their business. They're hoping that people will possibly go get food at the food truck and then make their way on down to the lounge for a drink and then, and then head home. But working with Jay, we discussed this with Jay and the mayor about this. The town does have a $50 fee per year, it's an annual fee per vendor, that the town would collect off of this. So that would make, maybe create some discretionary funding added to the general fund for the town as well. Any questions? I mean, that's kind of a shocking approach from the board. The chamber will be providing power off of our power poles in the downtown area. So maybe we'd have power and access to water. And we'll be covering, recovering those fees from the vendors.
Do you have any questions or comments for Mr. West?
Same order. You already got your schedule?
I haven't scheduled anything because I, I didn't want to, you know, calf before the horse. I wanted to have your blessing before we, we start gathering vendors. But being with the pumpkin festival and different area resources that I have, I have a list of trucks that will be invited to come. We would try to have one truck per night, four to six nights a week. And on weekends, weekend events such as 4th of July and other things, we would work with the garden club, provide them with those, those resources as well.
I love it. Love that.
Please put, put trucks.
You could have, you could have to provide fortifiedies or handle what mistakes or any kind of that, like we do at the pumpkin festival.
We, working off the example in Bailey, we did not because they, in Bailey, do not have anywhere to eat. So it's all takeout. It's, it's all takeout.
That's good.
Downtown development board meeting, maybe an opportunity for the town, downtown, the chamber to work together and possibly provide some picnic tables and places. We'll get it started and see how it goes.
Good.
Are you planning to start this? Do you choose something?
I will. If with your approval, I'll start working on it tomorrow. We'll start serving as quick as we can, following the chamber's Facebook page on both sides, post calendar up there.
Sounds good, Mr. West.
Do we have to move an approval for that?
To let them use the open depot area? You can make a motion for that.
I think maybe the, the Chamber of, move forward with food truck project.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. If there's no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you for that. Also, coming up this Saturday, if you're not already engaged with something else, we'd love to have you downtown. We'll be meeting at 8 o'clock here, led by our Spring Hope Pumpkin Queens. And they will be cleaning up entrances to town, road sides, as well as some other hotspots around town. A small team of us will be starting our pressure washing project with the Spring Hope Fire Department is giving us some aid on that. So we'll start pressure washing and cleaning sidewalk in town this weekend as well. If you know of, I know commissioners that ride the roads and kind of hit some hotspots, if you'll meet with me or let me know this week, specific areas that garbage and things may attract around the road sides, let us know. We'll make an effort to highlight those spots. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a report from the town attorney.
Nothing to report now. We have a closed session, but nothing right now.
Next item on my agenda is a report from EnviroLink.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Jenkins. I am the new Triangle area manager for EnviroLink. I've been associated with EnviroLink for nine years. I was the town manager in Robertsonville. And I met Mike Myers on December 23rd, 2011, when we had major problems with our wastewater treatment plant. And since that time, as the utility management company, they have taken on water and the sewer collection for the town of Robertsonville. I just wanted to make sure you knew, put a name to the face and your report was handed out today. And it looks like that we did 66 work orders this past month. The mowing and the limbs and leaves work orders were completed last week. And I rode around town when I got here just to make sure that, and I didn't venture very far, but it looked like that it was pretty clear. We are putting in a tap, or taps, on Third Street this week. And May 18th, the flushing will be done that night for the entire town. And I believe that your town manager was on Ash Street last week when we TV'd a storm drain and found that there were three, possibly four sewer laterals interrupting the drainage.
And a trash can.
And a trash can. Sorry. Rob Wilson is with me tonight also, in case I need technical help. But I hope that we can develop a really good working relationship. Do you have anything?
No, I don't hear of anybody needs anything.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for EnviroLink?
I do. Robertsonville, they just handle well and waste, the water treatment? Or do they do your grass cutting and leaf limb picking and all that as well?
No, it's just water and wastewater.
Who handled your grass cutting and leaf limb picking?
Their employees.
I think that's what you need to find out is where your biggest complaints come from. Is the grass cutting, the leaf limb?
Yes. I, I put up on that in the last two weeks.
Yeah, start, start the season off. It's not been real great, I would take it as. But we're glad and happy.
Thank you.
So you've been with EnviroLink nine years, you said?
Oh, yes. I have done. I have been associated with them on your side of the fence.
Okay, so you're new to EnviroLink?
I'm new. Five weeks today.
Okay. Then you're the district?
The area, Triangle area manager. I took Jared's place.
So how many towns do you, I guess you supervise EnviroLink's work? And how many towns does that encompass in your area?
I don't, I don't know yet.
Don't know yet. Okay.
I'm slowly but surely.
It varies.
It does.
Anybody have any questions for EnviroLink? Thank you for coming. Rob, you're our new man here in town? Is that it, or?
I am not your new, I am not your resident. You have a new resident here as of last month. His name is Aaron. I'm sure you've seen him. Nice stocky-looking young guy, brave, been around town. He's, he's staying busy for us. I think we're pretty much caught up on all your work work. And I think Stephen and the crew got all the mowing and all the leaf limb done last week. So I think, I think we're caught up at this point. Because we were still getting beat up in between losing the boom truck and the weather last month killed us here in the Delta City. So we've been back and forth and back and forth and back and forth trying to get caught up. If there's anything we missed, let her know. She'll let me know. I'll make sure somebody gets through it.
Well, I'm going to let you back in there. Will is your plumbing specialist? Will? Is it Will? Who's, who's your plumbing repair guy?
Mr. Lamb is on the side. It's about Mr. Lamb that does the wastewater.
Oh, William, Mr. William.
Mr. William.
Yes, yes.
Is that his first name or last name?
His name's William Lamb.
Okay. All right. We redid the Ash Street well a couple of months ago. And I've been after them to move the chemical tank over into the chemical room, which it's been in the pump room for years. And it treated enough caustic air in there to degrade all the pipes, all the conduits and everything. All that's been replaced. And I've been after them to move the tank to the correct room where the receptacles will control the pumps and all. All that's prewired, I borrowed a cord from your guys down at the shop, and it's run through a hole in the wall.
Wow, okay.
And also, the filter system on the switch that tells the pump to run is not, has not been changed yet and, and, and put back into, into working order. If he'll get in touch with me, he knows who he's looking for. And also, we need to coordinate down at the wastewater treatment plant, the new timers the town put in to alternate those pumps because they are still running a, a single pump 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We need to work on getting that set up.
All right. I will get with William tomorrow and have him coordinate with Tracy so that they all are on the same page, and I'll have him back, get back in touch with you.
Okay.
So if you need an extra set of hands or extra bodies, I can, I can handle that.
We moved it and prepped it, and then the guys came in and filled it with 100 gallons of fluid, and you can't, you can't pick it up over the well pipes and, and move it around the room. Just, just the final touches.
Well, if you've got a holding tank, I think it's here, it's not so renowned in the city that we can use to temporarily transfer the chemicals. And move the tank and get it set up. We, we can do that. It's just a matter of getting time and bodies to be able to do it. So I'll get with him tomorrow and have him to be back with you.
Thank you.
Steve, you have anything for EnviroLink? Thank you all for having me. Next item on the agenda is the report from the police chief.
We had two calls for service, or two reports, two reported calls for service, 187 total calls to service, 184 security checks or foot patrols, 68 vehicle stops, six traffic accidents, and no reported lights being out on the light poles. We, if you've noticed, the white bags around town, the big trash bags around town on the side of the road over the past week, community service has started coming back. I immediately put them on trash detail. I started at 581 and the old ramps to 64, eastbound and westbound. So we picked up all the trash at the top of those ramps because that's the first thing you see as soon as you come into town. And then we picked up all the trash from the 64 bridge all the way to Walnut Street to the stoplight both sides of the road. And trash starting at the city limit sign on that street, all the way to the city limit sign on the other end of that street. Some downtown area, I think there were a total of 40 to 50, 30 gallon bags collected. The next concealed carry class is going to be May the 22nd, and it is already full. As soon as I get the new date for the next class, I'll have a I'll have it updated on the Facebook page and then let the board know.
Anybody have any questions for the chief this evening? How, how often do your community service people, um, they continue, they come into?
As soon as we get assigned one, that, that's gonna be their job.
Okay.
Every time they come, that's what it's gonna be. Um, they've picked up a lot of trash.
Good.
I don't know if it's been noticed, but it's, they've picked up a lot of trash. A whole lot. Like I said, at least forty to fifty thirty-gallon bags, cool.
I just wanted to thank you for your, um, officers Saturday with the kids, um. I mean, they, they were there the entire time. They, you couldn't get through there. They blocked with cars, they blocked with cones. So some of the folks who had kids there, there was no car coming through Pine Street at all. I mean, between, and then they were standing there.
Yeah, they were likely to do that. They actually came in on their off day to do that and didn't put on their time. They wanted to come up out.
So I thought that was really nice. Not only did they do that, they also helped clean up. At the end of the night, they helped clean up. Um, so I really, really appreciate it. They were challenging the kids to dance and so they really got heavily involved with the kids. And also thank you too for, because I know it was late. You were texting, making sure everything was okay too. So thank you also for having the officers and yourself going over and beyond for our Southern Ash, um, kids.
Thank you.
I believe there's some blackmail video about our fancy people, so.
This is our, that's not what we did.
Yes, he challenged the child today. Yes, he did.
I wish I could've seen it.
I can provide it.
There's history.
Thank you, sir.
The, uh, next item on the agenda is the manager's report.
Uh, before I commit, sorry, on the first item there, uh, a quick update on the lights. Uh, so six lights over near the sixty-four, five eighty-one bypass has been installed and is operational. That was just done just a little over a week ago. Uh, again, uh, I think the first night they installed, uh, four lights. Uh, they weren't operational then. The next, next day, they installed two more. And I believe the next night they were, uh, again, very lit, uh, brightly lit up when you're coming off both, uh, the, the east and west, uh, ramp, uh, for us, off of sixty-four. Uh, next item I have on, uh, oh, the first item I have on the report, I know that I mentioned this, uh, earlier, but again, repeating some of the stuff with the Downtown Development Board updates. Um, again, well, we did approve, I mean, the RFP for the town-owned buildings did launch on Friday of last week. And again, uh, they're listed on the town's website. I've had, uh, multiple calls already inquiring about that and, and trying to set up potential, uh, site visits on the days that we have listed on the RFP. Um, and again, we had our co-chair this evening. Again, the, the garden club did, sort of was reestablished from talks and, and, and our meetings from the Downtown Development Board. And again, some of the future projects that we're looking into is, uh, again, finishing up or, or, you know, working on the downtown showcase. The mural projects, uh, different members of our board have, uh, volunteered to work in different committees on each of these activities. And again, with, uh, with these board members, they are asking for and, and soliciting volunteers from the public to assist them with these downtown projects. Um, and again, we recently had a training session on economic vitality that was provided, uh, by North Carolina Main Street. And we did have, uh, two, uh, two volunteers in addition to myself, uh, to participate in that. And anytime we have any additional training opportunities, uh, that come up throughout the year, I will, um, send that request out to the Downtown Board, uh, to participate or in addition, uh, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, if they have members or volunteers or board members there that would like to participate as well too. Um, next item I have is the street repairs and town hall. The roof on town hall has been, uh, has been completed and then with the street repairs, Marshall Construction has, uh, patched at least twenty potholes in town and that was done on four twenty-two. There are a few other sections in town that we, we had discussed and looked at, but it was just more than a, a simple pothole repair. So he is, uh, going to reach out to the town's engineer over at Stocks to discuss and then follow back up with me on potentially what that work would entail and potential costs as well too. Uh, and if there are any additional potholes that were missed, um, uh, please, uh, contact me. Uh, and that's for the general public as well too, uh, via my email that's listed on the town's website for any, uh, potholes that were missed. And we'll add that for the list for, uh, in the future work. As far as the Poplar Street well update, um, as of now, PWS still has not made a final decision on the Poplar Street well. So again, Kevin and I will still keep reaching out for follow-ups on, on when that decision is gonna be made. And then last item I have is, uh, public nuisance and violation reports. Um, one that I had been working on and it already started. Uh, we, it was the one oh-one South Poplar Street building, which is known as the former, uh, Boston Book Company building. Again, the property owner has been unresponsive to any request, whether it's from the fire marshal's office or from town hall or even from the police department. So on Thursday, uh, April twenty-ninth, uh, as an update, we did conduct an administrative, uh, inspection warrant that was obtained by Nash County Metro's Office. And again, accompanying me was the Nash County Building Inspector, Deputy Fire Marshal, the part-time code enforcement contractor, police chief, and fire department staff. And again, they're, uh, sending their reports and comments and, uh, we'll be sending out a, um, a letter to the property owner sometime this week. And then attached to, uh, your manager's report is a monthly report. It's not a full month because the ACE contracting had, uh, started, um, mid, mid-month. And so, um, but as of, uh, April twenty-ninth, that was what was, uh, created in the monthly report, listing all the addresses and violations. Um, statuses, uh, three have been abated. And then we have a, a bar chart just kind of showing what some of these violations are by the numbers. If you have any questions.
Make sure they, they, when they do a list, that they put north or south, or east or west on the street. Like on the street, there's a north and a south.
Yeah, I think some of them, they, they didn't do that and I, and I'll make note of that.
Anybody have any, uh, questions for the manager's report? So, and I will move on to the, uh, next item on the agenda and then it's a closed session. Uh, pursuant to North County General Statute, to consult with attorneys to protect attorney-client privilege, I will need a motion in a second to go into a closed session.
Make a motion, go ahead. Hold on, that, that. Before we do that. I know other businesses have come up after, but I know a lot of people leave. And I just wanted to take a second because Mr. Wilkins thanked Chief Gant, but I wanted to thank Mr. Wilkins for her group and putting on that, what the kids, they're singing from. They would not have had one. Uh, we peeked, gave it to the movie, could lose how they kind of watch off from the distance. That's how it feels. But, uh, I thought that was fantastic. I think the kids were absolutely appreciative and under these times, it was nice to have that little bright spot. And they got out to dinner, they dressed up, they had the whole, the whole night. So thank you very much for what you did. I appreciate it personally, as well as for the family.
Thank you. I didn't pay him back. I didn't.
It was, it was very nice, very well done, the whole parking lot. And yes, the officers were out there. They did a fantastic job keeping cars out and kids in. I was impressed, very impressed.